So we'll call this meeting to order. It is July 14th, Wednesday. It is now 8:32 and we're calling this special board meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. To my board colleagues, great to see you today. To staff, Dr. Stubblefield and the rest of our staff, thank you for joining us. Great to see you all as well. So we'll go ahead and start with our board norms and protocols as we do. As a board, we agreed to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, again, good morning. Great to see all of you. Anyone that's joining us on, watching us on Zoom as well, thank you for joining us. And Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries. Janie, you're on mute.
Janie's here.
Thank you. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, present.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to approve today's special agenda?
No move.
We've been seconded, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. All right. So we're going to go ahead and jump into our agenda. We've got a couple of agenda items. The first is our human resources report. So I'll pass it on to Dr. Stubblefield.
The human resource report is basically just some new hires that we are asking the board to approve on today.
Is there a motion to approve Gator Report?
No.
One of, and I will highlight, one of the positions there is the new associate superintendent who would be slated to start August 2nd.
I can motion we approve that. Okay.
Dr. Jaeger has made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
We've been seconded. Are any questions or discussion? Not Ms. Smith. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. And before we jump into our second agenda item, just to level the set this morning, again, I do appreciate the board, your diligence in helping us as we continue in our budget workshop and staff and everything you've put together to send to the board. We really appreciate all the information. You know, there have been some questions that were sent to staff and to leadership prior to this board. I did send you an email with the responses to some of the questions that came forward. It was this morning, so you may not have had a chance to review it, but you do have that in your inbox if you do want to take a look at those responses that were provided, although I'm sure we may talk through some of that today as well. Today really is to talk through, continue talking and working through our budget, you know, just to see what clarity we might have, questions we might have. I know Mr. Covington and Dr. Stubblefield and team have been working through some of the questions that we brought up at our last meeting, and we'll be presenting some additional information for us this morning. So if there are clarifying questions after they present, we can definitely have that conversation. And today, because we don't have any action items with the budget, so it really is just a conversation, discussion, and asking for clarity when there needs to be some clarity. So thank you, staff and board. I know this has been a long process and a lot to go through, but I do appreciate your patience and your diligence as we work through this. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Covington with our budget. Thank you.
And I will hand it off to Mr. Covington to talk through what the additions were.
Morning, everybody. I'm going to present to you all basically a refresher on where we are, and then we're going to go over the changes that were made to the budget. I can't say the budget is still imbalanced. There were some changes to some of the lines. So as we go through this, I'll highlight those for you. So this is the update for the 2122 proposed budget as part of superintendent's success plan. As you all recall, we are expecting a $5.1 million increase from the state. Mill levy change should generate about $4 million. And we took that information to present a balanced budget. We proposed 4.873 million for redirects and reductions. There's been no changes to this page. This is the page that has all the changes. It's in the categories of investment in our staff. The classified number went down when we took out the market adjustments for the directors and that category, and the people in the para, all of them gained more than 3%. So we reduced that number down to the 1411. Those dollars were redirected into the holiday pay line, which you see down in green. That number was originally presented for five days. It is now proposed at seven days for the 827,000. And then we changed the bilingual by literate stipend amount, which is the balancing line to keep the budget in balance. We are still working on how that program will work. It's not defined, but we have earmarked $302,359 for that program. So the total number for investment in our staff did not change. It's still the $9.5 million. The billing assessment needs category, there was no changes to that. And additional staffing of what you all approved, these positions at your last meeting. And so there was no changes to that. Sustaining operations, again, there are no changes as presented before. Wish we had those into a balanced budget. So, Mr. Lopez, I think we should stop there and go back to the changes and have questions concerning that section.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. So we'll go back and you have on your screen the proposed changes from the last time we met. And this is based, again, off of the discussion that we as a board had with staff and some of the questions that we had. We'll pause here. Dennis, is there anything else you want to highlight, or should we just open for questions on this page?
Yes, open for questions, sir.
Mr. Covington, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. I'll start. When I looked at the percentages that was proposed for assistant directors, elementary principals, middle school, high school, et cetera, and then when I look at our certified staff, what we want to give them, the question of equity just screams out, that just doesn't seem right. And we want to, you know, our budget says a lot in regard to equity. And what we're talking about giving some of these other people and what teachers and secretaries, bus drivers, it screams out. So I still have a problem with that.
Dr. Stubblefield or Kelly, you all want to respond?
Yeah. Well, I would say that that is a reflection of the fact that we haven't made adjustments for several years to those positions, and that is why you have to make a bigger increase. We got our information from what the market states, those positions should get paid, and that's why we made the recommendations that we made. It's just a factor of how far we are behind to where we need to be. And unfortunately, that does mean some pretty large increases. However, if we do not make these increases, then we'll continue to be behind. That's just the simple answer to that. Whereas with certified staff, we typically are giving a certain percentage every year to those pay tables. So that's the main reason that you have such a big increase in any one time.
But did it have to be, to me, it could have been phased in, because in any other position, you could argue and say, they need more. But I just would given them that I think it should be phased in, not all of that all at once.
Well, our, what we did.
You're going to lose your teachers, too.
Yeah. What I'm, all I'm doing is saying, this is what it would take. So that's a board decision about how you guys want to chunk that up. But my recommendation, if you want to be market competitive, is to make those adjustments all at once. We do lose quite a few principals, APs, directors, assistant directors to other districts who pay more, just like we do teachers and all other positions, which is why we go through this process, you know, every year to talk about where should we be making adjustments. There, you're right, there are lots of places that we can make adjustments. This is simply our recommendation for this year, based on where we see the biggest gaps.
Well, I just wanted to bring that out, because I think we lose, and I hear what you're saying, but I think we lose just as many teachers.
It's, it's.
And other people, we want to lose quite a bit, because, you know, we want to be competitive. But at the same time, I think we could have phased that in. And again, respecting your opinion, and this is just my.
No, I appreciate that. And that, that's certainly a possibility. That is not my recommendation, but you certainly have, you know, you guys have that right to make those adjustments.
Ms. Humphries.
Ms. Tishman. Do we not have a pretty high turnover rate in our nutritional services and custodial?
I don't know what the turnover rate is right now, Janie. I think some of that we've experienced this last year, really due to the pandemic. So it's kind of hard to say. We'd probably have to go back and look previous years. We do have a lot of turnover in those roles, and sometimes that's just because of the nature of the role. People do want to get out of those jobs if they can, sometimes. And so we even see people migrate in our own district out of some of those positions to higher paying jobs. So I think the pandemic year has been a hard one because they are such frontline workers, that that has meant a lot of people have exited. You know, we see that with bus drivers, teachers, nutritional services, custodial, anybody that's doing a frontline job. I can just tell you that we've experienced a lot more turnover this year than past years.
I've noticed that many of these lower wage jobs out in the market in the last six months have been raising their entry level.
Which is why, yeah.
Quite a bit.
Right. And we would recommend that as well. I mean, that's why the 3% increase is important to keep up with for all staff. I mean, I think that's one way we do it. The holiday pay certainly helps with that. Longevity pay helps with those things. And we know, I mean, that's an area that we want to work with Josh specifically in nutritional services on, because I know he has some better market data than we do on nutritional services. But that definitely is an area we want to, you know, do some more adjusting, looking at, you know, probably for this next year.
Because I'm sure you're aware of that Nebraska Furniture Mart and FedEx, and many of those are starting wages are above the $15 an hour.
Well, yeah.
For part-time workers. And even McDonald's and Burger King are, they're hard up for help, and they're paying teenagers $15 to $20 an hour.
Right. So.
So I didn't know what kind of effect that has on us with our nutritional and custodials. And the fact that, you know, I've been at almost every board meeting for 15 years, and the last two years, we've had a tremendous increase monthly in the turnover in our lower wage employees. And if I remember correctly, we've had to contract with temp agencies for nutritional service workers, and have had to lower our number of nutritional sites to be able to staff them. And I know quite a bit of that is due to COVID, but I'm just curious how much of it's due to, we just can't find the workers.
You know, that's just, it is a fact of the market right now, and we understand this. We don't necessarily have the same kind of funding that other businesses might have. So it is a balancing act, and this is just our recommendation where we would put the dollars based on market compensation adjustments. I mean, the analysis that we've done, this is, this is what Rachel, you know, this is what Rachel does all the time. And so we're trying to keep an eye on all of it. We definitely feel the effects of COVID, of, you know, other companies. There's a lot of competition right now for labor, as you rightly say, because so many people have exited those frontline jobs and for, you know, various reasons. But it is a tough market. And if I had a lot more money, I would, I would do a lot. So, you know, this is just a challenge, unfortunately, in our organization is how to make the best of what we have available to us.
Yeah, I realize you have a hand and you have to juggle so many different. Different, different parts of it. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Kelly, I have a question. I think the question was, remember when you did the comp analysis to move everyone who was under $15 an hour to that compensation schedule of how much it would take to move all the pieces, more than just the ones making less than 15?
Yeah.
I think what may help is the comparison of how much that will cost the district to do all of that modification versus.
Yeah. That, that, right. That, thank you, Stacy. Yeah. That I, I think the, yeah. The answer to that is, you know, we had done some analysis, I think back in February, and we gave you guys a number. And it was around $11 million. And the reason being is that when you start affecting big classes of people, big groups of people, it does have a domino effect across our organization. So it's not just as simple as adjusting a couple hundred people. Even a couple hundred people is a lot of people when you consider the rate. So that's why we're trying to do this in a methodical way, so that we can have the money available to make bigger increases. So next year, we would come forward with another recommendation to spend, you know, a couple million dollars making adjustments. The number we gave last, I think back in February, and Rachel's on here, but I think it was close to $11 million. And that is because also, it just puts pressure on an organization. If you're giving big increases to one group of people, then other folks start saying, well, what about, what about my increase? I mean, I do a similar job and you did, you know. So it just starts having some other implications. Plus, you have hierarchical structures. So when you affect the lowest person, then it affects the next two and three levels up. And that's why it's harder when you get to big groups of employees to make those type of adjustments. But we fully plan, I just want to assure you, we're looking at this. We will make a recommendation. And if there is additional funding, well, we would love to consider making adjustments, but it will be, it will be an expensive proposition. It won't be just a million dollars. It's going to take, you know, some higher level funds. And it may not be 11 million, because we're adjusting some of these folks right now. We're making this recommendation now to adjust some people. But we would need to give you a new number after, if we approve these adjustments, then we probably still have a very sizable increase that we would have to consider.
Oh, question. If we did not approve this and that money that you're requesting for an increase, how many, if, for instance, if we said, oh, not this group of people, but put it toward the lower salary range, how many people approximately do you think would impact, or would you be able to do anything with that amount?
We wouldn't be able to do anything with, I mean, that's what we're saying. We've made the recommendation based on the amount of money that we have, and where we need to spend it, where we feel like we need to spend it now. We really do have, and Rachel can chime in if she's on here, but we have, I think, 300 and some employees in nutritional services and custodial. I can't remember the numbers, but it's a.
398.
How much, Rachel?
398.
Yeah. So, you know, that's just going to be a much bigger adjustment to be made. And then, like I said, there's impacts across the rest of our organization as well, because we have to look at how that impacts other areas, other supervisors, other managers, other, we just can't adjust one group of managers without looking at all managers. I mean, it's, it's, Rachel will do all the work and do the analysis to, you know, focus on this for next year. But it's a, we've looked at it, you know, in a, just kind of trying to estimate what it would take. And that's, we know that the number is sizable and more than what we have to put towards it this year.
And the market adjustment for the paras, the aides, and the support class one group that we are recommending are some of the lowest paid groups. So we are working on moving those groups up. And so this coming year, we would also look at nutritional service and custodial staff, because after this recommended adjustment for that para aide support group, we are looking at only having two of those position groups, still needing an increase to get to that $15 an hour. So then we can also add in that nutritional service and custodial staff for next year to also start working in that progression to that $15 an hour.
Mr. Lopez, this is Dr. Nguyen. And first, I'd like to thank Ms. Tishman and Ms. Schwartz for their hard work. But as I listen to what you're saying, this is exactly what I have kind of been saying. And so not in violation of any open meeting, board members, you know my position on this, and I'm sure staff, Dr. Stubblefield, welcome again. And this is, this is your first in person, but I know that you've been listening. You know, I've listened to a couple of things you've said, Ms. Tishman, and I totally agree with you that by, by moving, and I'll just say, giving a 16.8% to any sector of our employees puts pressure on the organization and causes concern from other employees. Number two, what, what I don't quite understand, if the board does not understand, that we have the authority to readjust the numbers, so that it is a board decision. Number three, seriously, a serious balancing act, because equity is what we must pay attention to. Secondly, we haven't, I'm, we all bring up, I bring up more than others, the role of the taxpayer. Windite County per capita income is not Johnson County per capita income, and we're talking gaps. And I've got the numbers, I presented the numbers. I don't know if the board members looked at it or not. Again, COVID, you said labor is an issue, especially your frontline. And if we cannot find by perhaps phasing in or looking at the 16.8 or the 11.4 and easing that, you can find, you are scholarly enough, our staff, to, to put funds, some funds in, in those lower paying jobs and slightly reduce these 16.8, 11.4 percentage. And yes, COVID is still with us. So the unemployment rate of the taxpayer must be considered. You also said something like, which, the domino effect. Exactly. But the manner in which you presented $11 million increase for everybody, and I said it then, and I'll say it again, it makes it prohibitive. You are presenting the market adjustment here for a certain sector. Equity is not there. I'm sure there'll, there'll be other comments I'll comment on, but I cannot support.
Well, I just.
Excuse me. I cannot support the board approving a 16.8, an 8.7 to 16.8 percentage income for one group in one swoop, and we are not paying, we're coming in at 3%. Ask Mr. Going what the 4.5 actually percentage is. The balance is important. We have people listening. We have the public, the taxpayer. We also have the other employee groups. And I, as I said in my email, this impacts, and Ms. Tishman, I fully agree with you. There is a domino effect. There is a, a pressure on the organization, and the manner in which, in my opinion, that is presented, is not balanced. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and I'll, I'll come back with other comments later. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment that these are the reports that we asked for Kelly Tishman to review, as well as the superintendent asked for review. So when we say you, and you, I just want to clarify that, you know, Kelly runs the reports that we ask for, that's the analysis that we ask for. Her and Dennis works together. So also, we have to take into consideration that when we ask for the report of what it would cost and take for the $11 million, we asked for that analysis of what would be impacted, what areas are included, what areas and broken down into segments that was sent to us multiple times. So when we say to staff, you presented information that may have seemed out of line or out of this world or whatever, I just want to clarify that we, as a complete board, all board members asked for an analysis, and we were given that information to dig through, to look through, to comb through, and to make some decisions. But my concern is, has board members responded back with, okay, let's take these three tiers and cut the rest? Have we done, we didn't do that. As far as I'm understanding, I don't believe that we said, okay, out of the 11 million, can we take 1 million, and what can we do with it? Because if we distribute the money across board, there would still be, as we said, managers or other leaders of that staff that will be impacted and left without anything. And what's the resolve to that? So I just want us to be mindful of what we truly ask for, and the reports that we are getting, that is a reflection of what Ms. Tishman and our staff have been doing.
Dr. Jaeger, and yes, I did put in an email asking, I think, the figure. Dr. Yeager, and yes, I did put in an email asking, I think the figure, Ms. Schwartz gave a figure of three hundred and ninety-eight this time, the last time we were given. And we can go back and, and pull up the email. I think it was more like two hundred and sixty. But yes, I have, on behalf of the board for information, yes, requested a, a, um, a, a removal of a manageable sector of the lowest paying employees. Taking into consideration the domino and ripple to the other supervisors. So yes, Dr. Yeager, I have done that, put it in email and, and it was sent to Mr. Covington. So I appreciate your clarification and to respond, yes, that has been done. And, and, you know, if you don't like me using you, that's fine. I'll say the board. So the board, name you want, I don't have a problem with changing you. I just figure we all are, are here. But you want me to say the board? I'll be happy to say
You can say whatever you want. My, my point is, one person, you, is, does not represent all seven. So, and, and so that's important to note. One single person does not make the, the full decision. One single, each of us, me, we, it depends on all of us to come into agreement as to that. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, and I'm quite aware it takes four votes to do anything. And remember, the board makes the decision. My question is, as a board member, for relevant data for us to make an informed, intelligent decision is a correct behavior. So no, I, I, I'm fully aware, one vote doesn't do anything. However, you don't have to put to a vote whether or not you get data since we are in this budgetary process.
And I just add a couple of comments, maybe to help clarify too. And, and just to remind everybody, remember last year when we started down this comp analyst project? We made two point five million dollar adjustment to pay tables that affected all of our employees less than a hundred thousand dollars. So I just want to remind everybody that we, we have been moving our pay tables up. That's the whole purpose of what Rachel does, is we're constantly looking at market for these positions. And with the, you know, the application that you guys approved of software, that's even going to make it easier and more information available to us. You know, I understand they're large increases for some of these positions. And again, I will just say that's reflective of how far behind we are. And I wish it wasn't the case because obviously it would be more palatable for all of us. But it is a fact. And when you look at the data that we gave you, you can still see that even with those adjustments, we are certainly, you know, we're gaining on being more competitive with other districts, but we're still slightly behind. So that, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you understood, this is, this is what we're doing. We do understand and we do appreciate all the comments. Because I know that everybody is concerned about this, just like we're concerned about it. And this is just simply our recommendation based on what we see right now, where we could, you know, more effectively use our funding. But that, it's, it's simply our recommendation.
And if I may, when we're discussing the domino effect, the paras, the aides class one and two and the support class one are the groups that we identified that would be able to make movement without automatically affecting and causing that domino effect that bumps that price tag up. So that's why there are first group identified here to make that movement that isn't going to be that giant price tag. And isn't going to cause a waterfall effect that pulls in a lot of employees. So these are the groups that are the lowest paid groups that we can start making those adjustments without causing a domino effect that bumps that price up.
Rachel, so with that adjustment, what would be the lowest paid group and what amount that, would that be? For the, if they're already the lowest paid, you said there were two that would not be at fifteen. What would that be and how far away would we be from that?
That would be aides class one at fourteen oh three and support class one at fourteen twenty-five. And then also the nutritional service and the custodial group are not part of this recommendation. But they also need to be reviewed for the coming year. Those are two positions that we see the waterfall effect start with. Or two groups rather, not two positions, but two groups that the waterfall effect starts almost immediately with that first position change.
And then, because I'm playing a little catch up, although I have been watching some of it. Have we ever shared like a, and I'm just throwing a deer out there, a five-year plan to get to where we are if we were looking at like all employee groups, if there was a target for certified classified in administration, if we're trying to get to market? Have we done an analysis like that? So that if we are budget planning, I know we can't always, like if all things stay the same and we know the formula doesn't change, this would be how we can get there, or this will be the recommendations or adjustments we would have to make in our general fund budgets or whatever to get there. Have we done an analysis like that, uh, long-term? That every employee group could predict when they would get to whatever the goal of the board and or the organization is?
Not at this point. My position started in two thousand and nineteen in the fall. And so our first initiative there was to look at the market and see where we really lie on the classified staff and start getting them there. We just approved a new platform called Comp Analyst that is going to give me a lot more capability to start doing that kind of future planning and far-reaching analysis to see where we need, where we are currently, where we need to be and how we can get there over the next few years.
Thank you. So one of the things I think we, I can commit to as the superintendent is we can't, depending on how this falls out, look at all the employee groups and then do some more long-term planning. So that when we present it to the board, it's a multi-year or those kind of things. So as we're discussing it, we're not looking at one year in isolation. So if the board were to choose to phase the administrative one, then the, everybody could see the long-term plan. So that's one thing, depending on how this falls out that we can commit to is to do more long-term planning so that that goal of fifteen dollars an hour, the larger dollar amount we can chunk out so that everyone can have that information.
Thank you. That, that would be great, Dr. Stubblefield. And I know as, as a board, we, we've had these conversations and, and staff have, have mentioned that they're working to get us there. But I think having something in front of us that we could see kind of how we get there over the next year or two or three would help answer some of these questions or provide a little more clarity. So that would be great. Thank you. This, a follow-up question, sorry, Ms. Page, follow-up question to, to Rachel, I guess, from those lower paid groups. Are we competitive in the market right now with our nutrition workers and some of the, some of the other areas that aren't at fifteen dollars an hour yet?
In some of the areas, as far as like para professionals, we are competitive in the market. But nutritional services was not part of the adjustment last year, aside from the overall classified increase. And that is one group that I want to start doing a compensation analysis in full on. And again, on the custodians as well. Because we are going to see market changes because of the pandemic in that sector, in those two sectors. And so that is, those are the groups that I want to target for market analysis over this next period. Uh, so we can make those recommendations.
Brand, I would like to add, two years ago, when we took nutritional services to thirteen eighty, that made us the highest paid employer. And as you're seeing, the market has caught up with us now. Then we done, just done a two percent last year. So we are behind the market again. But when you all approved the thirteen eighty starting pay, we were the highest paid because those are food service workers.
Okay, thank you. I think that's what I was looking for. I, I thought that was the case. I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you. Ms. Page
Let me add something else about the food service workers. You all know that child nutrition is supposed to be revenue close to break even, not make a profit, not lose money unless we're going to supplement. And, and due to COVID and having to feed everybody, we had supplemented three million dollars. But normal operations, child nutrition should break even. And if you raise salaries in child nutrition, you're going to eventually have to raise food prices, meal prices in order for them to stay solid.
Mr. Lopez and Mr. Covington, you sure can verify this. If you go on the Shawnee Mission website and look at the nutritional worker, well, let's put it like this, the same thing, my question, are we, does the middle school assistant principal that we're proposing here have the same contract term of, of employment hours X, Y, Z? When you look on the Shawnee Mission website, they don't say nutritional worker. It sounds like food service. And Mr. Covington, you can verify by quickly going to the computer right now. But that their starting pay is more like fifteen eighty-five, sixteen and upwards to seventeen, eighteen dollars. Again, you know, I don't have to make it up because you can staff, Covington, and Mr. Covington, I'm sure the computer's right in front of you, or Ms. Tushman, or even Rachel Schwartz. So the answer is perhaps, Mr. Covington, we were two years ago highest, we are not now.
Oh, I agree. Now.
Correct. So that, to answer your question, are we now? The correct answer is no. We are two to three dollars below per hour. So, you know, again, it appears how, how one ants asked a question, how one responds. But particularly with food service, if they do the same thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Covington, if there then is a shortfall, you said one option would be to raise food prices, is that the only option? We can
The only other option would be that we were supplemented out of the general fund.
Exactly. So once again, it's not, it's not the only, you know, I, I don't, I'm not saying you deliberately tried to mislead any of us. So let's make that very plain. Because I'm not going to disrespect anybody because I don't expect, I do not want to be disrespected. So I do not want to imply you were trying to mislead us. But that, yes, we, if, if it cannot go in the red, then the money's got to come from someplace. And, and we wouldn't surely not raise, perhaps, we would not want to raise food prices, then we'd have to supplement it. So again, perhaps how you, how you presented to us. Could I ask one additional question, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Tushman? If for some, if, if for votes, Ms. Tushman, ask you to, this proposal, instead of eight point seven, raise four point two point three, sixteen point eight, raise it to eight point four. Could you come up with those numbers? And then with the intent of distributing it to some of the lower range of people? And, and once again, are we at three ninety-eight? Are we at two sixty? You know, where do we pick up, where do those numbers change? I'll go back to the original question, please. If there are four votes, you can do the math. The computer can do the math.
Yeah, sure. We absolutely can.
And number two, with that amount of revenue, can, I guess the question is, and once, well, let me, excuse me, let me ask this. When, when you say we're keeping everything in balance, that does not mean there, there could be additional funds raised and budgeted. I mean, all numbers do not have to balance out, correct?
Oh, uh, Yeah, Dennis.
You have to have a a balanced budget, yes, but not saying that any of these numbers can't change.
Okay. So that if, if you need an additional five thousand dollars and you don't have it by adjusting your numbers, where do you get it from?
You will have to go back into that section that says redirects. We would have to go find additional redirects.
Okay.
That's not listed on the paper.
And so it would just take four votes to make that happen, correct?
That will be the will of the board, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Covington.
Mr. Covington. I had a question. I, 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 I did have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Page, I cut you off. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I had asked the question that Dr. Nguyen had alluded to earlier. And I know I was, we were told half an hour ago that they just posted it this morning. I didn't see it. And my question was, could they lower the numbers too? So I didn't know if that was answered earlier, if you had an answer for that. Because my concern, when you look at certified staff, and I know they're listening and they're watching everybody else get their money and they've been pleading and begging. And, and I just want to know, did you have the numbers adjusted? If we didn't give sixteen point eight, I'm not saying they don't need it. But if we had to adjust it, you, I was told that the number, we had an answer to that question and I did pose it. So do we have the numbers? Can somebody tell me? I didn't see it this morning. I looked last night.
I'm not sure what, are you asking, do we know what the number would be if we lowered that?
Yeah, I asked, could, could it be phased in? Not such a dramatic bump. But instead of sixteen, let's say it was ten. Instead of eleven point four, let's say a seven.
Right.
Instead of ten point three. And I asked that question earlier. And again, I didn't see it last night, but I was told it was on this morning. So if you had it, could you share it with me?
Uh, I don't, I, I guess I didn't get it and look at it last night.
Ms. Page, I responded that yes, it could be phased in and depending upon what, what level. So Rachel can run the numbers. And if they don't have the numbers, for example, if you just, whatever it is, if you say half of whatever it equates to now, and if you slash it in half or whatever, but the half would be, okay, now, yeah, testing my skills, like four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that was on that line. That will be half of whatever the current is. And then, but Rachel can give you more accurate numbers for
Well, I was just wondering, because again, if I'm a teacher, I'm looking at this. I'm not saying the other people don't deserve it. We're behind. I get that. But when you look at what they're getting and you're looking at what other people are getting, there's a problem. We're talking about these people not being caught up. Well, you got another group that's upset. So we got to find a, and we got to find a happy medium.
So we can, we can run additional. I mean, this is, like I said before, this is just our proposal. We're happy to, if you want to run some different scenarios, that's, you know, that's the decision. I can tell you, you, you know, for four hundred thousand dollars, you're not going to be able to adjust like a big class of people. But it could be used, can you use it someplace else? Sure. You know, those, those are board decisions. But we're happy to, Rachel can run that and just give us an estimate of if we brought down the increases. We're, we're just trying, you, you know, our deal is that we want to be as competitive as possible. It just helps us recruit and keep people. And that's, that's the whole game. And we're trying to do that across the whole district. So it is a challenge to figure out what is the right increases for, for all employees. So that we, you know, we can kind of keep things balanced out in our organization.
And, and I also asked about, I saw where we went from five to seven on the holiday pay. I asked, what would the numbers be if it was ten? Just asking. I didn't know if I could get an answer on that.
One million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand.
How much?
One million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Yeah, that should be in your email to, to the full board, I think, Dr. Stubblefield. Yeah, that should be in your email um to to the full board. Um, I think Dr. Stubblefield provided that via email yesterday. And then I made sure I sent it to the full board this morning. Well, thank you. Ms. Humphries, I know you had a question.
Yeah, Dennis, I know that uh the board decided many years ago, a long time before you were here, that it was very important that we provide transportation to as many of our children as we could. So consequently, we do not get reimbursed from the state for a lot of the transportation that we provide. This, we, the the Wyandotte County or the KCK taxpayers pay for a lot of the transportation that the state does not pay us for, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
For you to go to and from school.
Right. So if the board decided it was important for our nutritional service workers and custodians, or I'm focusing on nutritional services because of what you said about the uh revenue neutral.
Yes, ma'am.
If the board decided it was important for that category to have higher wages and not enough revenue came in, and the board voted to supplement nutritional services, then we would have to take that out of the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that is a decision the board would have to make. And if there was not enough income, we would have to supplement it just like we do the Bussing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was uh comparing it to a similar situation.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Randy.
Thank you. Are there other questions pertaining to what's been presented um to us today? Clarifying questions, uh, I know there's been some requests to potentially look at different um increases and how that could affect our budget. But are there other other questions that would help help us um get to where we feel comfortable, other clarifying questions we might have?
I I know Mr. Covington stated that they're still working for the bilingual, belligerent stipend. When will they know? You know, original plan was the principals. And then people brought up, what about the secretaries? Uh, what about some other people? And so when you say this, should should that person be able to write as well as speak?
So Ms. Page, that's where um we had a conversation the other day, and that's where it um expanding it and having, you know, having a, some levels between bilingual and bi, being bilingual and belligerent is very different than being bilingual. And so a lot of our um, and this is an assumption on my part, but a lot of our classified staff are bilingual. So we really don't have any uh way or protocols to say this is how you can demonstrate that you're bilingual or bilingual, bilateral, belligerent, and open it up to all employee groups. And that's where it turned to red and not, we can allocate this amount, but we don't have those things in place. And um so if we took it away and that money was redistributed somewhere else until we had an actual plan, that is definitely an option, but that it was a holding line since it was already on there. And the three hundred thousand was expanding it um with a stipend in mind so that all employee groups would have an opportunity for the stipend. But really, we haven't historically, my understanding, Kelly, or somebody can tell me, we haven't historically given, there aren't stipends necessarily for classified groups, so then some other like, well, how do we do this? And we we wouldn't have those answers by today. So that line is just a dollar figure holding to develop um that opportunity as a recruiting um mechanism for all employee groups. And so expanding it beyond administrators.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because I I think sometimes we forget about our Asian community and our African community and being able, we're not always able to communicate with everybody the way that we should, and we don't want to leave anybody out. And that was my concern, to make sure we broaden the scope. We brag about having a hundred and something languages, but we're not able to communicate with everybody the way that we should. So we, again, the concern is not to leave anybody out.
Well, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, for that um explanation, because honestly, I didn't know what yellow, red, and green stood for in this, in the, on this slide. Um, so that if if there were four votes to say that we would uh not spend, I don't even, is it three hundred that the message boxes blocking what the one or more upgrade updates are available? Thank you. Uh, three hundred and two thousand, if the board decided not to at this point, because there is no protocol, no criteria, don't know who would be eligible, and surely don't know how to dispense it, uh, that three hundred two thousand combined with if there are four votes to um phase in the increase of the directors, that would, I teach history, so I don't teach math, but that's easy math, si, you know, something like six hundred and seventy thousand dollars that could be redirected. Um, is that correct? Dr. Stubblefield, is my math, basic math correct? Or Mr. Covington? I think it is.
Yes, seven eighty-seven. If you cut, if you cut the market adjustment, that nine seventy in half.
Correct.
And then do the redirect the three oh two, it's about seven hundred thousand.
And you, six hundred, seven hundred thousand, correct? Um, and are you saying the holiday pay to ten is a one point eight million additional?
No, no, no. The total would be one point one eight two for ten days.
Okay, so.
Days.
So.
And it was five point ninety-one thousand. So we added two more days to get to the eight twenty-seven. It's like a hundred and eighteen thousand per each day.
Okay, so to add three more days, how much would that cost if the board decided to vote that direction? All my comments are are dependent upon board approval.
Three hundred fifty-four thousand.
How much? I'm sorry?
Three hundred fifty-four thousand more to the eight hundred twenty-seven.
All right. And then one last question up to certify. What is that four point five equate? What percentage does that equate for certified?
Roughly four and a half to five.
Okay. Five percent would be four point five million?
About nine hundred thousand to, nine hundred thousand to a million dollars per per increase, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
This is Yolanda. I do have one quick question. So can you remind me, when we talked about adding the holiday pay, the reason we talked about that is because this this staff was not being paid during, okay. So when we talk about going from the seven days to the ten days, I'm trying to put together the the days that are that our other staff is already getting paid. Is that, does that make them equal at that point? I'm just, or are they normal? Okay, I seen Ms. Page telling me no.
No, we have more than ten holidays where those people are not paid.
Okay.
Um, didn't, how many holiday, paid holidays did the uh full year employees get?
Oh, gosh, I gotta go back and.
I know we asked that before.
We we counted them up.
And I can't, and I I wrote it down, but I can't find my notes.
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen, in some years it's sixteen.
Rachel, how much?
Fifteen, and in some years, because of the way the days fall, it's sixteen. But I think generally it's fifteen.
It was fifteen. Okay, so we were figuring part, part-time employees, which is what we're looking at would be like seven to eight holidays.
Yeah, that's how we, that's how we came to the seven.
Seven, yeah, okay.
Yeah, uh, the last time, and yeah.
Okay.
And I and I think that's really quite honestly a very good compromise. I mean, I think that's a good number. Uh, I mean, I I like the seven days. They get slightly above others in the market. And um, you know, it's.
But the only reason I I I'm kind of, I'm pushing this, because you're, again, we, if you saw the world news or any news yesterday, McDonald's is popping fifteen to seventeen. Uh, I can't think of the uh Hispanic restaurant. Uh, can't, they're going seventeen. You're competing with all these people. You gotta give them something to keep them. Because again, we're not paying a whole lot, but it's a respect. It's okay. But if you can give the holidays, because again, these people, when we're shut down, all of them are not getting paid.
Right.
So you gotta give them something, put some meat to it. So then that way you don't have to spend so much, and I'm not knocking Labor Max, because they helped us. You don't have to pay them five hundred thousand, because you don't have these people over here. So you gotta balance it out.
I think it's important to know that we keep comparing them to the fast food restaurants and not, that's not comparing apples to apples. That's not comparing oranges to oranges. Our nutritional staff have set time hours, days that they come in. They know that they will be coming into work, places that we're comparing them to McDonald's, the Mexican restaurant, et cetera. They base on staffing. They could work in the morning, that night, they could change every single week. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. A better comparison would be what was brought up is to compare to the other districts to see what they're offering, the salary, the um, you know, time off and compensation, that would be more apples to apples. But once we start digging into the industry like Amazon, McDonald's, Burger King, that's not a fair comparison. Another reason why that although they may get hired on those entities, again, they're not guaranteed hours. So one time they could work ten hours, three days, next time they could work um another time. So that's not a true comparison. The ones that work for us in nutritional services know what time they have to be there every single day. No, they don't.
And they also know that they're not getting paid when we don't have school. So the still food service is still food service, and we're losing them to those entities.
I would doubt that we're.
If you're really doing your homework, we're losing them to those entities.
No, statistics show that we're not losing them to that industry.
Come up and be competitive.
People are leaving that industry, not that we are losing them. We're not, I I doubt that we're losing anybody to McDonald's who's going to work on Saturday and Sunday, knowing that their kids are in school Monday through Friday. So again, I think a fair comparison would be apples to apples, rather than grabbing and using other fast food services. We're not competing with them. It's, I don't think that's a fair analysis. I don't, you know, I have high respect for McDonald's, Burger King, et cetera, high respect for them. But I, we're in a totally different area. And I believe that, you know, getting the market data maybe from other schools, their compensation would be a fairer analysis. Um, a bus driver, that's like comparing our bus drivers. That's like comparing our bus drivers. I'm speaking, I'm, I think I'm speaking. Um, that's like comparing our bus drivers to driving the metro. Two different people. We can't com- combine our bus drivers for our school district compared to driving for the metro in Kansas City, Missouri. That's not a fair comparison. And so that's all I'm saying. When we bring up these comparisons, where we're asking for the analysis, we're not asking Rachel, hey, Rachel, go and find out how much Amazon is paying. Go, let's see how much um the local restaurants are paying. That's not a fair comparison. Let's see how much uh McDonald, I mean, uh, Applebee's is paying. We know that they pay two thirteen, and they rely on tips. Again, goes back to let's truly compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges, and not less, and let's not inflate our numbers um without market analysis, saying that school districts are losing their employees to entities such as, that's not what it's saying. It's saying that that market of people are leaving the industry completely to go do something else.
Yeah, and I I was gonna add. Yourself, but they are leaving, because they can go to work every day and get paid. Not lose ten or twelve, fifteen days to this or that. We are losing.
Every day at McDonald's.
Keep fooling yourself. Keep fooling yourself, and you'll see.
Uh, can I just?
You've got guaranteed work in McDonald's.
Hey, hey. You, you, hey, people have left there.
What are we talking about here?
Okay, excuse me. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm gonna bring us back on track here, uh, try to refocus us. I know that there's conversation about who we're, where we're losing folks. Um, I I do think we want to be very cognizant of how how we compare ourselves. And and, you know, we do want to know where where folks are going, but uh, Ms. Tishman, it sounded like you were uh trying to say.
I was just gonna add a clarifying point. One, I I think Stacy brings up a very good point. All the points are very valid. Look, we are gonna look at all kinds of data. This, this is what Rachel does all day. And with our new tool that we're getting, we're gonna be able to do even more analysis. So thank you for approving that. That will make our lives a lot easier. We do have to look at a lot of different uh alternates for people and what they can and can't do. What we do realize though, and and so it is important to remember, there are reasons why people want to come to a district versus working at McDonald's. And it is the stability of the work hours and the work schedule. And that's not just labor. I mean, that's not just nutritional services. That's, that's all kinds of jobs. Um, we we hear that a lot with even our labor for, you know, our um facilities, management people. Um, they they potentially like to work at our district because of the fact it gives them some more stability. Now, they have to, you know, we can't always match the salaries of all those uh other alternatives, and that's the challenge. We're trying to, we're trying to be as competitive as possible. Um, but that is part of the selling point, is there is that stability piece that people do value. So we know that, that doesn't mean that we ignore. I mean, obviously, we can't ignore what alternatives are for people, but it is part of the selling points of uh working in the district like like ours.
And I think moving forward, one thing, and I don't know, that we can include in the reports and uh the exit data, like if they're going to another industry and that kind of thing, so we can um be more intentional about exit interviews, exit data, stay interviews, um, in including that data when we present the market or whatever we are um recommending around um compensation, the stay interviews, exit interviews, and when people are joining the team, what is their reason? So that'll give us some of that um data that is not reflected in the numbers, the qualitative data.
I appreciate that, Dr. Stubblefield. That's been one of my questions. And even in the conversation today, is to me, we're speculating on where people are going and we, you know, but to know where where people are going and how we're being impacted is huge to me. So I do appreciate that.
Mr. Lopez, let me follow up with Ms. Clark's question. And you, and Mr. Covington, you told us this before, Ms. Tishman. How many people in the green line are we speaking of?
Oh, uh, seven. Rachel, do you have the number of how many people are impacted by holiday pay?
And I just want to.
I have a second, and I sure will.
Yeah, so, uh, Dr. Nguyen, I may have misspoke. I, that's how I interpreted the colors. But Dennis, when he was putting it together, it could have meant something else, but that's what red meant to me. It was, so I just wanted to be clear.
Was the placeholder.
No, I, thank you. I appreciate the the color coordination, because at least I, we can, I can ask what color, excuse me, what line I'm speaking of? It's the green line I'm speaking of.
Nine hundred and twenty.
Nine hundred and twenty. Huh. So, and here again, we're doing math, because it's, it's, our employees are not just numbers, but we do, I do need to mentally figure out how many are being addressed. So of the nine hundred and twenty, three hundred, and Rachel, these numbers, you, I I probably flew it also, three hundred ninety-eight are the ones that are still below fifteen dollars an hour, correct?
Hmm, I do not. So, before or after recommendations?
I'm sorry?
Are we talking before or after the recommendations?
I'm talking about the figure you just gave us um thirty minutes ago of those who are below fifteen dollars an hour. At one point, when you did the full-blown eleven million, it was something like two sixty. Now you're saying it's three ninety-eight, so.
Right, three ninety-eight was the entirety of staffing in the food service and.
Right, three ninety-eight was the entirety of staffing in the food service and custodial staff. Under that management level. Not all those individuals are making less than fifteen dollars an hour. So there's where you're seeing that difference in people there.
Of, of those, how many are, you had a number at one point, uh, that was under fifteen dollars an hour?
Right.
While she's finding that number, I guess my question then, those who are under fifteen dollars an hour. If the board decided to increase the, and I appreciate Dr. Stubblefield, the green line. To ten days, then that would be somewhat of a.
Well, so, how many people, how many people was it? Nine hundred and some? I didn't write it down.
I wrote nine hundred and twenty.
And you're at one point one-two basically, if you did the. That'd be about a thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars on average, the person. Plus you got the three percent increase on top of that.
Yeah, but you still say there's people who with the three percent are still below fifteen.
Yeah, and that, some of those people will be in our recommendation for para aid support, right? If that gets approved. So that's, that's the question that Rachel's looking up now is. How many did we recommend on that para aid support line? And then how many would still be left, less than fifteen dollars an hour after that?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So.
So I know we've talked about sometimes.
Yeah, so Mr. Lopez, uh, you know, I'm gonna, and with, with, at the appropriate time, um. I would like to make a motion to make some adjustments. I haven't said what or where, but at the appropriate time, I don't, I, I want to inform you and the board. That that is my intent.
This is Yolanda. Has anyone spent, um, Ms. Tishman, has anyone spent time, uh, considering how much it costs for us to continuously fill these positions? And is it really, you know, and is it worth, so we're talking about the fifteen dollars an hour and I'm gonna go. If we're, if, if we need to look at something even more different than that. And then I'm also a strong advocate for people don't always leave jobs. They leave, they leave environments. And so are we, are we countering and are we also considering what that looks like in comparison of not only dollars, but our environment that we're providing as well? And I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just asking what that looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can get you an actual number, but, you know, basically if you think about it this way. We have a recruiting team that's full-time busy all year long recruiting for positions. And, um, even so, we still rely on outside services to help us get those positions filled. So, you know, you've got basically the cost of two recruiters and an recruiting, uh, manager. And that's for all year, all, you know, so that's that cost. Um, yeah, we understand and, you know, this is a difficult part of what we're talking about today. We have a lot of needs across the district for additional adjustments. You've heard, heard us talk about it. And we can make more recommendations, which we will, and I, and we are already planned on putting together a plan. Over the next couple of years of how to ease into, you know, some more of these adjustments. If we have more dollars, we can put more money to it. We would love to do that. And part of, yeah, that, that's just a simple answer. I mean, I think we're trying to solve some of the, um. Cultural things by some of the positions that you guys added at the buildings are gonna be very helpful. Having some of those additional staff members is gonna be, you know, important to those buildings as far as management. Um, so I think we're trying to do some of those things that improve the cultural aspects as well. At the same time of trying to affect the compensation piece.
Okay, so I guess what, what I'm also saying though, if we look at the amount of dollars that we're paying due to turnover. Uh, so I'm not saying that we have to go out and find new dollars. I am saying though, how are, are we making sure that we are leveraging and really putting those dollars in the right place? And I know that's part of today's conversation, but strategically, how are we looking at that or have there been other conversations besides adding bodies? Cause I, I don't think adding bodies always solves for the issue. And then also, I guess my second question is, do we have any type of utility positions? We talk a lot about how our food service people don't have work all year round or whatever. Do we have any type of utility positions that say, okay, when you come off of this, you'll rotate here, you move, you move as needed. Versus continuously having this is your role. Um, and maybe have we looked at how that will save dollars and keep people employed year round versus just certain, so many days?
Yeah, um, and we, we tried that again this summer, so we do offer those opportunities. I know operations themselves offers, offers opportunities for people to help do some maintenance type work over the summer months. Human resources, uh, we took, you know, four or five people, um, that are one A six employees. And, uh, we put them, you know, to projects and have been great help for us. So yes, we do. Now do we have, I would love to formalize it some more, truly. Uh, but we've been experimenting with this over the last couple of summers. Doing just what you're saying, trying to keep people employed that wanna be, you know, through the summer. Some people don't want to. That's, there's a reason why they wanna work one A six and then some others do want the extra income. And so we are, we are, we have experimented with that, I guess, Yolanda, over the last couple of years. And I would love to make it a more formal plan, uh, going forward.
I found that utility roles help. So, I mean, I'm, I'm basically hearing this kind of say. You know, near the end of the school year, we say, hey, we may have some extra work for you. But if I know I'm hired in to be, let's just say, utility. Then I'm, I'm more excited about what I do and I know that I have work that is promised to me year round. And so as we're looking, I mean, like you said, formalizing that process and hiring people that are flexible and agile and able to do different things. Might definitely benefit us in the long term.
Yes, oh, absolutely. That's, that's true.
Uh, Ms. Tishman, I have a question on that. Now, when we say we hire them in the summer, is that for eight hours? Cause I talked to some people and they said it was only for four and it wasn't for everybody. So correct me if I'm wrong. I just asked them, where are you working this summer? And two said, yes, but for four hours. And I was under the impression it was an eight-hour position during the summer. And they said it wasn't offered to everyone. So when you say that, are you saying it's gonna be an eight-hour utility position? And it's for the whole year. So can you help me out? Cause the ladies I talked to, they told me it was only for four hours. And I was under the impression it was an eight-hour position during the summer.
What, what we did is ask those supervisors who might have summer work. To look and see if they had some of those positions available and to offer that. So I don't know specifically, uh, I'll, I'll tell you very honestly, what was offered to each person. Um, so I, I can certainly check on that, but we left it to those supervisory groups. To, uh, manage that themselves. So if that was operations and they, then they identified the work that they had. And they then asked for people who wanted to work.
Cause I mean, when you say that, I would prefer that it be an eight-hour thing. That, so that way you're working every day, because people have to feed their families and not wonder what I'm gonna have to do. But I didn't know, because when I asked them, I said, okay, you're working. How's it going? They said, well, we need more hours, but I only do four. And I was under the impression it was an eight-hour position. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
And I think, um, that's something that, that's, um, um, Ms. Clark. Uh, is, what she's asking for is creating a two hundred, it whatever, sixty-one day position. And it's utility and it says food service, this, that, like, all of those components. So it's a whole new job description. And so people who apply for that will know that it goes along and is not dependent upon. Um, and I think the experiment, it's given us, um, the data that we need. But what does it look like to create that position? What's the hourly rate for that? And then people know that they work year round. Um, and it also changes, you know, their, the benefits that they receive. Well, yeah.
No, Dr. Stubblefield, that's why I asked that question.
No, no, I agree. I was just.
I just wanted to know, because they said they offered it during the summer. And some of the people I talked to said it wasn't an eight hour, that was their complaint. It wasn't eight hours. It would be great if I could do eight hours every day. So that was my concern.
So I'm gonna jump in here real quick while there's a pause. Um, we've had some really great dialogue discussion questions. I really appreciate, um, staff, the, the information you're providing. Or numbers of questions, um, you're asking and feedback you're giving. Um, I do want to make sure that our staff have a direction, um, and which way to go as they continue to work on this budget. Um, I know, Dr. Nguyen, you said you have some, some thoughts and have a, a motion you'd like to, to present to the board. Uh, before we get to that, again, I do want to make sure that we provide some direction to staff on where to go from here. Um, I am gonna ask Mr. Gohin if he could just jump in really quickly. I know, uh, there was no action that was noticed up for this meeting. So I just want to make sure, um, that we're doing what's appropriate. Perhaps, Dr. Nguyen, if you have some recommendations and then we can get a pulse of where the board feels. Um, that we might wanna go rather than, than the direct, um, motion and, and action since that wasn't noticed up. But I, I do want to ask Mr. Gohin what's appropriate or not.
Yeah, I mean, technically, since this was a special meeting, there's not an action item on it. The, the board would have to modify the agenda unanimously to allow for action items. What I'll say at the same time is though, I think it's very important that the board give direction to staff. If you guys are wanting to make changes in the proposals or even see alternative proposals that you guys give staff direction to do that today. So that the board has time to review that before you guys have to make final decisions on the budget. So even though it's not technically noticed up for any action on it today. I think it is important that you get consensus from at least four board members. If there are things that the board wants to look at in terms of alternatives to what the staff proposal is. That you let staff know today so that you can get what that alternative proposal looks like back from staff. Before you guys have to make some final decisions. So notwithstanding the fact that it is not technically noticed for an action today. I think the board should by, essentially by unanimous consent, agree to allow for some. Action type items in the form at least of recommendations so that the staff has time to prepare. Proposals consistent with what the board or the majority of the board is looking at, that they're thinking, okay, we wanna change X. Or we wanna consider changing X. What does that look like? So that you have the information to do that.
Give Mr. Gohin, so, um. Da- Dr. Nguyen, it sounded like you had a suggestion, a recommendation. I wonder if you want to share that with the full board?
Sure, and Mr. Gohin, you need to provide the language so it is consistent with what you just said.
Yeah, I think, I think the first thing perhaps would just be, um, a motion to modify the agenda. To allow, um, some action items in the form of recommendation on a proposed budget. Um, I think if you did have a unanimous vote on that, then Dr. Nguyen could, or any board member could then make motions. Related to, um, suggested changes to the proposed budget. And we wouldn't be hamstrung by having to try and word each one separately. So my, my first suggestion would just simply be a motion to amend the agenda to allow for, um. Action items related to, uh, potential changes to the proposed administrative budget, uh, for review by the board. Uh, so you would make that motion that would pass unanimously, then I think you'd be free to make motions. Uh, along the lines of what I anticipate Dr. Nguyen has and maybe some other board members have.
Okay, Ms. Lopez, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? Not Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Gohin, we didn't have unanimous, unfortunately, that does not pass. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Um, so I guess if it's not gonna be unanimous, then you're, then you're just stuck with, um. Recommendations for, uh, the staff to consider and bring back his proposals.
I think, um, could also, I mean, if we maybe just have some recommendations and, and, and talk through that. If there's a general consensus. Dr. Nguyen, I, I know you had specific, uh, recommendations, so perhaps you want to share that. And they may fall in with what other board members were thinking or not.
Exactly. Just reflects the conversation that a couple of us have had. So for clarification, Mr. Gohin, how does? How does staff know, based on, let's say, Dr. Jaeger's comment? That if one or two people want you to come up with numbers, they do it. How does that work? Just, just, uh, all we need is a language, clarification.
Yeah, I, I think, I think if somebody makes a, a recommendation. Uh, I think the chair could still seek a consensus from the board. It just would not have the effect of a motion.
And there would be no vote taken?
There would be no vote taken.
Okay.
That's, that's the best we can do. I, I wish I had, that's the best we can do.
I, and, and I understand because the, for the budget process to proceed. It's different scenarios. And so that's all I'm suggesting, Mr. Lopez. And, and I, I would like to say, see a combination of, of, of three. How do you, do you wanna, do you want me to throw all three out? And essentially, it's, it's what we've been talking about. Do you, do you want me to throw the three out?
Yeah, I think if you would be specific, that way, um, the board members could, you know, we could. On consensus to see if that's what we agree with. And that way, it'll, it'll help staff if that's what we agree with.
Great, um. I would, would like to see the numbers based on the conversation. And based on the email, you all know where I'm coming from, to, to, for a, it seems for. A more equitable balance, although the eleven point four, the sixteen point eight still are much higher than others. But that the, um, the line item that says market adjustment director, assistant director. Be phased in at a fifty percent rate, in essence, cut it in half. And those savings set aside. Second idea is the, and again, Dr. Stubblefield, just for reference. The, the red line be set aside until criteria is established. And even if criteria is established tomorrow. We can put it back in, but that, at this point, that three hundred and two is set aside. And the holiday pay go to ten. And what remains, if there's any remain, would be to. Well, I, I'll, I'll just keep saying, and Mr. Covington, you, I'm sure you'll step in. There, if my math is correct, there would be some. That doesn't equal, the, the amount then would not equal a nine point five million. But that, that amount could be redirected to student achievement. But it's how the board decides, but it, it, the action would be reduce the market adjustment director in half. Set aside totally the bilingual, biliterate, and increase the holiday pay to seven. But that's the range of my comments.
I do have a question for Dr. Stubblefield. Um, Dr. Stubblefield, I know that you've been working with KASB to look at our positions and getting that analysis. Based upon what you know so far and thoughts and kind of looking at what we're asking for. I just want to get your thoughts on the market adjustments for the director, assistant director, principal, NAP.
So based on, um, uh, what KSB is doing, they're looking at our organizational structure. And, um, they really, the pay components, um, I don't think that's part of what they're doing. They're just looking at that. But the, uh, what Rachel has done with the market. Um, in comparison to the districts around us. Um, what I would say is I agree that we are behind. And part of my recommendation was the addition of the days. Um, because that's where there, you know, if we had just made the, the, the adjustments without adding the days. I think that, um, would have created another layer, uh, a dynamic that wasn't really apples to apples. But if we're looking at apples to apples, what Rachel shared was it puts us in the middle of the pack. Um, and so that's where I would fall. And so that's where I would fall. I do hear and understand the concern about the equity around it. And, and so I think if the board would like to see what it looks like and what it means, but I do think we have to do something for that group. And if, if the, if the, if the board consensus is to see the two options, we can definitely provide the two options of here's what it is if we do it, which you already have, but here's what it looks like at 50%. But my, I think when, and I wasn't in all the conversations with Kelly and the team when they first brought this up, but I think it was if we do this group, then that line goes away next year and that amount of money we would have to move to the other groups. But it's just a matter of, at this point, board preference, but this was administration's preference.
Thanks. And another thing, Kelly Tishman, I have a question as relates to turnover relating to the director, assistant director, principal, NAP. Are we currently having turnover in that, in those main areas? I think about some positions in my mind, and I would say yes. But from your HR perspective, what are the turnover or how are we losing people? According to our HR report, it seems like we are losing our top levels.
We do, and, and they go for higher salaries at other places after they get some experience especially. It's just like the teachers, they do the same thing because there's, you know, just more money that they can make in other districts. For the directors, assistant directors, the real problem is that we just can't even hire people into those jobs because we are so far behind other districts. So what we pay in a director, other districts play as a manager. And so it just means it's hard to recruit for those positions. We don't have that many positions. And, but it's important that we're market, you know, competitive. Even if it's 17 people that we have as directors, we still need, you know, our assistant directors, we still need them to be market competitive. So, you know, like Dr. Stubblefield said, I hear everything you're saying. It is a challenge. I wish I had better news. We can just use more money everywhere. That's the reality. And it's just tough decisions. So, you know, but we, we hear what you're saying and we'll do what the board asks us to do.
Also, could you put the slide up that showed the additional modification to days as well? Is that one of the slides?
Yeah, to the number of days that principals, APs would be working. Yeah, Rachel probably has that.
I think it was on one of the slides, too.
It was, and as Rachel pulled it up, it was four days in each category group. It did, now, for some groups, and depending on which district you looked at, it was a wide range. I recommended the four days based off of when the ranking that Rachel presented, and I know Johnson County's tax dollars is different. Shawnee Mission was our closest competitor. So I said minimumly our days should be on par with theirs. And the area where we, four days would have brought us in, I think, every category except for middle school principals. And that's where we were way far off on, based on their days, the number of days that their middle school principals worked. And when you look at that, when Rachel brings it up, Blue Valley's principals, the, and I'm thinking high school. When you look at that across the board consistently, Blue Valley's principals work more days. North Kent City, I think they're like, they work the most days, but when you look at who's making the most and who works the most days, it was Blue Valley. So that's a larger discussion, but the middle range, when you add it the four days, if Rachel went through each category, they were a little closer than that. But Blue Valley's middle school principals and their high school principals do work a 260 or 261-day year, and it's been that way as far as back as I can remember when I was administrator there, probably close to 20 years ago.
Would you also be able to share the importance of that? Like, why aren't all levels, like high school, why aren't they all working the same number of days?
So typically, and our elementary principals are actually closer. Rachel, I'm jumping around, but I can start with high school. Typically, when you think about the complexity of the master schedule, the number of staff that they supervise and the extracurricular activities and the community connections and sports and things, the most complex, just with all of those variables, is the high school principal. So in several districts, and I, days sometimes can be a little cloudy, but I like to equate it to months. So if our principals, let's say in Olathe, they, in Olathe, most of their principals, they're off like the second or third week of July to the second, I mean, of June to the second or third week of July, which gives a month. But as the school year is ending, if there's summer school, summer activities, late hiring that needs to occur, they can wrap that up before they are not in the school. And then they come back a few weeks, a couple of weeks typically before new teachers, which in most districts is August 1st, and that allows them the time to prep and work with their building leadership teams on either side to prepare for the upcoming school year. And that's where the days come from, is wrapping up and preparing, and you can do it on both ends. But in most districts, it's either like late June to late, like there's a four-week period and some just take the whole month of July. Well, no one really takes the whole month of July, but it's like the last two weeks of June, first two weeks of July, when you look at when principals are returning. The districts like Blue Valley, where their high school and middle school principals work year-round, and my experience in Lawrence was the same. There's typically a moratorium where the principals are working and have flexibility, but the district office is not scheduling meetings because then they are meeting the needs of their individual buildings and/or their communities, but they have some flexibility in their schedule. But those moratoriums for like no meetings are typically about four weeks.
So, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you.
We do have, there are three recommendations, thoughts of recommendations. I will ask, are there other recommendations, specific recommendations from other board members that we can go through? And then we'll kind of go through consensus to see where folks land on, on any of the specific recommendations. But thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for sharing your three. Are there others from other board members?
I would ask that we consider the pay via the size of the school, especially, you know, some of our middle schools have a very, very large population of students versus some others. So I would ask that if there, if the board did agree to change salaries, that we possibly could look at compensation via size of the school because we know it's different to manage a larger school versus a smaller school.
Thank you. Any others?
Mr. Lopez, got a question. Legally, can we do that? I'm just asking, legally, can we do that?
Yes, you can set individual administrative contracts at different levels now. You have to have comparable reason, you have to like a rational reason for doing so. In other words, if you had a principal at Washington, the principal at Wyandotte, and they're comparable-sized schools, you really don't have a basis to pay those principals differently unless they, one of them's been there longer or one of them has additional certifications or some other rational reason. Size of a school or size of a student population could be a consideration. But you want to be careful about that because when you're advertising for positions and comparing, you know, you want to make sure you're doing it that the good way. Good example might be, for example, down in Texas, you have schools, high schools that are much, much larger than schools in Kansas City. Those people get paid a larger salary because of that administrative oversight that they have. But if you're comparing similar-sized schools and similar-sized categories, you want to make those salaries as close as possible so you avoid any kind of claim that you're not paying somebody fairly because of some protected classification or some other improper motivation or reason.
And we do it the elementary already, just if everybody noticed that. We had two categories on the elementary side. So we'd have to look and see what is a good breaking point on the middle school.
Well, I just wanted to make sure legally we're within our, what we need to be doing. So nobody could say this, this, and that is that.
You need to be very careful with it because it certainly can open you up to some challenges.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Tishman, Mr. Lopez, question, please, Ms. Tishman.
Yes, please.
Didn't you all already imply that you had some different categories when we approved the vice principals? You all, if I remember, you, in essence, said you already had different categories for why you couldn't explain how that lump sum was being spent. Do, do you remember what I'm speaking of?
No, but are you talking?
We already approved a line item about our last four vice principals. Do you?
Adding, oh, adding. You remember when we added vice principals is what you're talking about?
Correct.
Right, and that's, well, Rachel made a proposal in this actual proposal, the one you're looking at with principals. We didn't used to have principals at middle school and high school broken out. Am I right, Rachel? We just had secondary?
We didn't have assistant principals at the elementary and middle school divided. Those were in the same group.
Okay, right, okay. So you, she's now broken those out in more detail through this, making this proposal so that we were taking consideration the size and the work that they were doing. So we didn't have elementary and middle school together. So we did try to break those out with the proposal we're making currently for these adjustments. And we, I don't think we had that all completed by the time we were adding those positions that you're talking about. Because you were, you were trying to get to an average, I think, salary, maybe?
No, you had identified, see.
I think, I think.
That's the challenge.
Yeah, I think what Dr. Nguyen is referring to, Kelly, is that when the first sheet of positions, there were some schools that had assistant principals and some schools didn't. And then, so I think a question was asked around why did some have or they have more? And it was that we were adding these because some were larger, if I recall. I just remember watching them. But it was more around size based on the number of assistant principals or, and/or other positions, deans, whatever was on that list. Some of the larger schools may have had, is that the case? Some larger schools have more assistant principals than the smaller schools? And do all of the elementaries have assistant principals or do our smaller elementaries not have assistant principals?
They did not, and I'm not sure. Today, we added quite a few assistant principals in the last proposal to elementaries. So I'm not sure how many we have right now that do not have assistant principals. I'd have to go back and look.
But was that decision based off, because I think it gets to what Mr. Goheen was sharing about. As long as we have clear criteria, if you are 450 of, or above, you get into one assistant principal. If you get to 1,200, then you can use that same criteria to, if we were going to have a difference in pay for, say, if the middle school has 1,800, there is a, that principal gets whatever the calculation is of, yeah.
Yeah, we could split it up that, yes, we could do it that way. So.
So my question is, based on what Dr. Jaeger just said, you're, are you already doing this or have you done it? And do we know, as Dr. Stubblefield used to say, is it clear to the point? And, and that's what we have not been provided. So if, if we're, if Dr. Jaeger, you want to see what you just said.
I'm saying if we're looking at reducing the salaries of that line item, and one of the reasons is because we're lacking in school size and all that things, that we maybe could consider that different category that Kelly just mentioned of how to categorize and properly compensate based upon another layer of it.
And, and consistent with what you just said, my question is, have you already started to do that? Now, we, it hasn't, it hasn't maybe been provided us, but that, you know, I would agree with you, Dr. Jaeger, that that would then be clear and, and at least there's a explanation why Suzie receives X and Sally receives Y.
Yeah. So Rachel, why don't you communicate what you've done on the assistant principals so that we can clarify for everybody?
No, we don't, I'm not asking for it now. I'm just in this, in this process of
All right.
of re-submitting proposals for us to consider. So I'm not asking for you to do it now.
Right.
And, but I'm not, I don't know what Dr. Jaeger is.
No, I'm not asking for anything right now. But I'm saying if, based upon, like Randy said, one, two, or three, then that would be my caveat to that, but we can address that once we get there, Randy.
So are there other specific, thank you both for that conversation. Thank you all. Other specific recommendations, and I think we're going to lose a couple of people here in the next 10 or so minutes. So I want to try to take advantage of while they're still on with us, go through some of this. So are there any other specific recommendations based on the budget proposals that have been presented today? Any specific changes, recommendations for changes or adjustments? There's four that have been presented. We're going to go through those here in a minute, but want to allow for anyone else.
I have one, but I think it's, we still haven't finished the negotiations where it says certified. We're still working on that, right? So there's some flexibility in terms of what's going to happen.
Correct.
Okay, because I know we haven't had another meeting and that, so that will be tweaked later on?
And we'll have an executive session on Tuesday's board meeting for negotiations.
And then I, I think one of the things, in case people are watching, that line is also, it's a placeholder because until an agreement is reached, and if it comes above, that means there will have to be some additional redirects, correct, Dennis?
That's correct.
If it comes below, then there'll be dollars that can go somewhere else. But I just want to be clear in case there are, the staff is watching from a negotiation team. That is the placeholder. It does not mean, but that's why you have negotiations, but you have to. Yeah.
That, that's exactly right, Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got 10 minutes before we're going to drop a couple of folks. So we do have, sorry, was there somebody? No, okay. There are four recommendations on the budget. I just kind of want to walk through to see if there's consensus that the board wants to see some, some adjustments in these. I'll start first with the first one that came up, reducing the market adjustment by up to 50% was a recommendation. Just kind of want to see from the board, is that something that the board wants to see? Another proposal with that? If you can give me maybe a thumbs up or a head nod if you think that's something you want to see and just kind of. I don't see everyone. Ms. Humphries, Dr. Jaeger, Ms. Clark? Is that something you want to see?
I will look at it, but I also want to see the regular, I want to see what's proposed now, next to it.
Okay. Ms. Clark?
I'd be okay with what Janie just mentioned as well.
Not comfortable with the full, with 50%.
Okay. So it sounds like there's, there are enough folks who want to see a different proposal. So, so Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Covington, if you wouldn't mind, maybe sending the board via email, what that, another, if we didn't go with this original proposal, I think folks still want to see this, this original recommendation you've given, but maybe an alternative. If you wouldn't mind providing that, there seems to be enough consensus. Um, if you wouldn't mind providing that, there seems to be enough consensus around that.
Mr. Lopez, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I, I know we have four things out there and I'm not going to, um, pretend like I did not get a little bit lost in some of the back and forth. Uh, Dr. Stubblefield, out of all of these, out of the four proposals, which one? Because I'm also trying to connect my docs there, which one was, did she mention? Being in support of?
So I said, based on coming in new, listening to and those things, the one that the administration is recommending because then it will free up the, uh, those dollars to move to another group in the future. Um, if the, and that's with the understanding, the plan from HR was to do like, so you're doing the classified peer group this year and the administrators, and then those dollars would free up and be, uh, be available for the other groups in the future. So that was the, based off the work that the administration had done. Um, that was the one I supported and I did acknowledge the inequities there and said that if the board wanted to, we can show a phase in as well. I do think we have to do something, um, so that's where, that's what I said, and I, um, Ms. Clark?
Thank you.
Thank you. So on your list, uh, Mr. Lopez, is that one, two, three, or four? Because since we don't have the slides, um, still don't follow.
That touches, I think, kind of all, all four of them, uh, were from the original recommendation, proposed recommendations from, from staff. Um, these just specific line items, so I think that touches that first one around reducing the market adjustment rate um, for those directors, APs, principals, um, but also hits on the other, the other items that we'll, that we'll touch on.
I, I do have a question.
Dr. Yeager, if you don't mind, I have one more question. Um, before we move, before we move forward through these as well as we're making this decision, uh, are any of these going to get us off the hamster wheel? Because I hear us right, we say, okay, we touched fifty this year or, you know, fifty percent next year. That's going to continue, continuously keep us on the hamster wheel. Is there one that will get us off maybe a little bit quicker, uh, instead of having us constantly behind? One that's doable? Does that make sense?
I think that's what staff is recommending, um, that, that have recommended right now. Um, and what we're, what we're talking about now is, we're not making any decision on anything. It's just asking staff to come in with, uh, with an alternative proposal to what's been presented. But I think to your, specific to your question, Ms. Clark, what staff are recommending now, they are saying that will get us caught up in that market rate with those APs and then will allow us to look at some of the other positions next year, if that answered your question.
It does answer my question because it sounds like we're saying, let's catch everybody up right now or we can chunk this thing out. And there were several different things that were taking place, so I just want to make sure as we're going through this, I am one hundred percent on the same page.
No, thank you for your question, and if I misspoke, Mr. Covington or Dr. Stubblefield, please, uh, please correct me. But I think that's, that's what the recommendation will, will, you all are saying will help us do. So, um, it looks like there's consensus to, to at least get an alternative proposal um, so that we can have a side-by-side comparison on that market adjustment. Um, Dr. Yeager?
Yes, I was going to make a comment. Um, as I mentioned, I would not be comfortable with the fifty percent taking that away. But, um, possibly seventy-five percent, you know, I don't know the hour time it would take to run a report comparing fifty and seventy-five, but with that additional, um, work or clarity, I think seventy-five percent may be more of a realistic number, not more of a realistic number, but just give, would give us another perspective of how much that would be. Because, um, based upon that, I know we had talked about number of days or changing, um, some other perspectives that were recommended. So I'm asking if the board would be interested in seeing a seventy-five percent. Or twenty-five percent, sorry, I'm saying it backwards, twenty-five percent instead of fifty, just a twenty-five percent, sorry about that, thanks, Randy.
Okay, um, I, I think I would, uh, maybe lean on, uh, on staff to, to give us maybe one or two. And, and I did say up to fifty percent, so I think, you know, staff would know best what that number might look like, um, in order to get us to where we need to be to be competitive. So I, I think staff, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Covington, if, if, if that language is okay with you of an alternative proposal of up to fifty percent, and if you want to give a third alternative, you know, um, that would be okay too. But at least one alternative would be helpful, it sounds like. Um, the second piece was around the setting aside the bilingual, bi, bilateral pay until we can get criteria set. Do you folks feel okay with that? And again, criteria might be set tomorrow, um, but, um, you know, whenever that, that gets set. So just want to see thumbs up, thumbs down, if you feel that that's something you want to do.
I would really like to see that put aside for next, till next year, till we have time to really think and put a lot of thinking into how that would be implemented in a very fair way.
Okay, um.
Mr. Lopez, can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Yes, Mr. Covington.
By set aside, do you mean wipe out of this year's, year's budget? Meaning there's no money sitting there whenever we finish the program? Or I'm, I'm trying to get clarity on what you mean by set aside?
I originally heard Dr. Wen say kind of, um, set criteria first before we put a number into that line item. So if we can set criteria prior to voting on it, um, that would, that would help the board feel comfortable in knowing what, what they're voting on. Is that correct, Dr. Wen? I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, I heard you say you want criteria before we say yes to this line item.
And I agree with that, but my question is, do you wipe away the money out of the budget? Or are we just holding the money? That's my question, I know we need criteria.
Yeah, Mr. Covington, I think what they're saying is bring it back. I mean, and we can see if there's consensus once, because we won't have criteria tomorrow. So I think they're saying, put that money in another line and then bring it and if that's something, once we flush out the criteria and have that to add it to like a future budget, unless I'm misunderstanding, I think that's what Ms. Humphrey is saying.
I, I don't want to rush into something and then find out we have a lot of, uh, problems because we hadn't thought it out long enough and carefully enough.
I think we need to go back to the basis of the line item, so, um, which one, who would be confident to speak to the reason why this line item is here?
I, I think it was added, quite honestly, because it is something that would help attract, um, people to our district and, and to recognize that we need those skills in our district. Uh, because, you know, we, we obviously have the translators, but it takes a whole lot more folks, right? To work with our, with our students and our parents and our community, um, and that was the recognition of that. Um, so it, it was a placeholder when we originally put the fifty thousand in there and it grew to three hundred and some thousand. Um, I do think we're going to have to do a lot more work to figure out exactly who all and how is it going to be administered? Because back to what you said, well, how are we going to, how are we going to reward or award people these stipends? There are, there are ways to do that, and we have obviously testing that you can do. Uh, but do you give some for bilingual and not, and if they're at least bilingual and not bilingual? Or, or do you give them only if it's for both? So there's things like that that has to be worked out.
So to me, the question, um, should he leave the money in that line item or zero that line item out, I guess is, is his question.
That's my question.
Yeah.
My question. I think we should leave it in there because if we didn't use it, you were using it as an incentive to recruit. But we do need some help with communicating with our parents and families and stuff. So why couldn't that money be left there and you could use it for communication? Because we had, I don't know the name of the system that you, that schools were using. And then there was a disagreement on whether they were told not to use it, and that's a whole nother debate. I'm not getting into that, but it's obviously, we do need some help with communication. So if we didn't use it as an incentive, can it be used to help communicate with our students, our families, whomever? Don't take it away, if we can use that.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, I'm of the same thought as Ms. Humphries of taking it away because if you're going to want, and it's almost dividing it up, you know, what do you want most? If we want to add ten days for holiday pay, it has to be paid some way. And so because we are not prepared to provide three hundred and two thousand, that's money for this year that can be spent for holiday pay uh, or contribute to holiday pay. That, so I'd say, no, zero it out and use that money for the additional three days holiday pay.
And, and I would say we shouldn't completely zero it out because we've heard in our community about the lack of translators available and also recruiting bilingual staff for ours. So I think if there's a way to quantify exactly how many, uh, we're trying to recruit in the area of bilingual that we may not need the full amount, but, uh, would there be any confidence, Kelly, in being to provide information on exactly how many bilingual we're looking for? How much we would truly need just for that frontline teach, not teacher, but, um, stipends that we need to add? If we could know that number, um, I, again, I wouldn't say fully take it away, but at least give an alternative number.
You know, I asked that question when we first thought about it and was told, the board was told that there's money there for translators. This does not go for translators, um, and there's money from probably some other fund for that program of translation. This was just for salary. So we were told there's money for translation, so that isn't, that does not, um, well, what we were told in the past.
Yeah, and that's accurate. This originally was, remember it was fifty thousand dollars and it was specifically for administrators. And, um, the minister, the team was asked to expand it to classify. We kind of said we have our other staff besides, um, administrators or certified and classified positions. So we just ballparked like if the stipend was five hundred dollars and we had X number of people, that's where this number is coming from. So I just want to be transparent about that. We don't have, we don't know how many people, we could have way more people that's bilingual versus bilingual. So that's, it's all the data that we would need to collect. Um, and it was at a, and then we would have to establish the criteria. So being transparent around that, that's not some, that's going to take time. So if it's a placeholder is specifically for that, the translators and the communication, and Dennis can tell me if I'm wrong, they're already budgeted in other parts of the general fund. So what we need to do there, we can do, but this was directly originally to, uh, compensate administrators who were bilingual and bi, uh, bilingual. And then the expansion was to, um, have it for all employee groups.
So to help with staff, thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, for that. Um, there's two options that were asked, do we want to zero it out or as a placeholder? Um, I'm going to ask, just kind of give me a thumbs up if you want to leave that line item as is for now as a placeholder, knowing that staff are going to work through what that looks like. Um, they wouldn't do anything with it until they figure it out what that looked like, um, the criteria. Um, folks who want to leave that in, give me a thumbs up. Okay, um, folks that want to zero that out, thumbs up if you want to zero that line item out. Give me a thumbs up if you want to. Ms. Clark, do you have a, a thought of whether you'd like to zero it out or leave it in as a placeholder for now?
Whatever makes sense.
Okay.
Oh, maybe that could, so maybe since we're split, it could be, um, on the proposal that they bring back to see where that money will be allocated or spent if it's not in there.
Yeah, Mr. Covington, uh, Dr. Stubblefield, do you need a little more direction, um, from us on that? Or do you think you could work something?
Wait, uh, and Dennis, you can tell me if I'm wrong, we can do like, here's our original recommendation and next to it, here it is, zeroed out in conjunction with, um, if we do the a twenty-five percent reduction with administration, so you can see different options. Is that a challenge, Dennis?
No, I think, for me, it's just to put us in the budget mind frame and depending on how you vote on the, going from seven to ten. To go from seven to ten is three hundred and fifty-four thousand. That's the only increase that right now that I've heard as a recommendation. The other two are reductions. And so if you take the three hundred and two completely out, you're still going to need fifty-two thousand dollars to fund the holiday pay if you take it to ten. And so that money would have to come from somewhere, either reducing the market increase or finding another reduction somewhere. If you decide that seven is enough, we won't need the three fifty-four. And any reductions you make either to that line for the bilateral, bilingual, or the, um, market adjustment, we would still need to know where we're going to place seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, well, let's try to answer your, one of your questions there around the, the days. Um, so, Dr. Stubblefield, I appreciate kind of that clarification you made around the, that line item, thank you. Um, if you could work with Mr. Covington on that. This next piece is around the, um, the pay from, the holiday pay from seven days is what's recommended and proposed. Um, the alternative requested is ten days, which goes to Mr. Covington's point about the budget. We would have to, um, pay for that, um, somehow. Kind of a, give me a thumbs up if you would like to see the holiday pay go from seven days to ten days in order to give Mr. Covington some direction. Okay, um, giving everyone a chance here. Okay, looks like consensus is we'd like to keep it at seven days. Uh, Mr. Covington, that may give you some direction there as you're working on that budget. The last one that was brought up, and it sounds like we're kind of already doing this, um, is around considering pay via the size of the school's student population. But, uh, it sounds like that's something, based on the conversation, that's something that we take into consideration already. Uh, so I don't know if that's something that we need to, and that goes back to the market adjustment that was recommended. Is that right, Dr. Yeager?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, um, but I don't know, Ms. Tishman, that sounds like something we're already doing, uh, or we already practice?
All right, say it again, what was the question, Randy?
Uh, Dr. Yeager had asked us to consider the pay for administrators based, based on the size of the student population or the size of the school. So that's nothing new that you would need from a recommendation.
It, it, but we will do it, we'll look at it. We, uh, do it at elementary currently, so this would be just another look at middle schools, I think is what she was talking about. And I guess we could look at high schools the same way if we wanted to. I mean, it would be based on student population. If we can see enough of a break, it'd be a question of, is there enough difference between, uh, those numbers to justify that?
Okay, board, would you like to see that information? Um, give me a thumbs up if that's something that, that you want to see and consider.
Well, as we're doing, what's, what is our population of the middle schools now? I know, I know, Carl Bruce has nine hundred.
Yeah, I think that's probably where they hover, around nine hundred to, I think, I'm trying to think where Harmon was at, uh, not Harmon, I'm talking middle school, yeah.
I think Carl has more than some, at, at least more than Slago, one of the high schools. If I'm not mistaken, she had more than, than, uh, Slago.
And Arrowhead.
Yeah.
We would have to, that's what we'd have to look at. I don't have those numbers in front of me, I don't know if anybody else does, but we just have to look at.
Look at it.
Thumbs up if that's something the board wants to, wants staff to spend time on. Okay, I'm seeing three, three folks who want to see that, so consensus is that that's not anything that we.
But Mr. Lopez, I don't even believe you, I don't believe it's a matter of whether we want it or not. Seems like there must be some built-in criteria. You wouldn't give someone who has nine hundred students the same salary sum who has two hundred. Now, we may not have that range.
Is that, does that criteria exist already, Mr.? So maybe that criteria, if you could send that, that's already in place, I guess, if there is that.
It's not in place right now.
That's what I'm saying.
It's elementary, but not the secondary, and that's the problem.
Right, so that's what we'll look at and see, we don't have.
Right, so that's what we'll look at and see, uh, we don't have that big of a, I don't know how big the range difference is. So we'll see if there's, we'll just tell you what the, the lowest school is and the highest school, and then we can see if there's some. Decision we want to make around that.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's information.
But it is a fact, if you check it out, that Arrowhead and Carl B. Bruce, they have more than some of our high schools.
So it sounds like it's information you want to look at anyway, so that would be helpful. Okay. Okay.
And then I think Dennis had a final question. If there is um, additional funds, where do we want it to go?
Two recommendations going forward now, those are both budget reductions.
And so I think that we had talked about them going to salaries or, um, the non-class, the classified.
Did we say that? We didn't officially say it.
No, we didn't officially say it, but is that.
That's what you said.
That's what I would recommend is that, that the over, you know, we look at redating the salaries. Of the lower.
Lower range of salaries. So is that, is that what the board would like to see is those reductions? Uh, I don't remember what the amount is, but. To redirect that towards salaries for some of those lower paid employees. Can I get a thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, so you got a little bit of direction there, Mr. Covington. All right, um, I know Mr. Gohe and Ms. Tishman, I, I apologize for keeping you both later than, than what you needed to. Uh, I know they have to go there. Any other questions or thoughts around this? More information, Mr. Covington, Dr. Stubblefield, that you need from us, or are we at a good place to, to end today? We are, okay.
So let me just sum this up. If we go to the fifty percent reduction, that's a savings of four eighty-five. Get rid of the bilateral, that's three hundred and two. So that's a seven hundred eighty-five thousand that we gonna do a proposal to the lowest paid out. If you go with the uh, twenty-five percent, which was the other reduction, that would be five hundred and four thousand. So those are the two scenarios that we should bring forth, how to spread those two dollars amounts to our lowest paid employees.
Yes, based on the discussion, yes, sir. Back to the board and then, um, you know, I know we need to make some decisions next week, so thank you.
Mr. Lopez, uh, for the next question, next page, and I'm just asking. If the numbers, actually, this is from, I guess, Mr. Covington, if you all factored in the ten point three. And the sixteen point eight. Salary increase into the line item for assistant principal, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
I didn't understand the question, I'm sorry.
We need to go to page seven of your, the next page.
Is my screen still up?
No, sir.
Are you referring to the, the ones that we added this year?
The five middle and two high.
Did, are they included in the numbers, um, Rachel, that when we counted? Um, on the slides that Rachel presented, I think is the question.
They would not have been included.
So that was, that number has to be adjusted also.
Yes, ma'am, for the new position.
So does that throw your balance out of kilter?
It will.
So Mr. Lopez, that's a, that page seven of the, if, if Mr. Covington's screen would be up to page seven. That second under building assessment needs, that second line will not be the same. Correct, Mr. Covington?
That is correct, ma'am. It will cost more than six twenty-seven for those assistant principals.
Mr. Lopez, uh, Ms. Tishman and I do have to leave to get to a court hearing, so, um, if there's any additional questions you have for either of us, just let us know. Thank you, Mr. Gohe and Ms. Tishman. Sorry for keeping you a little late, but we appreciate the information.
No problem. See you guys.
Okay, um, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Covington, and thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for that clar- clarification. Other information, direction you need from us, um, at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, board, are there any other clarifying questions, uh, information you need in order to? Make some decisions. I think we're at a good stopping point. Thank you for the conversation, but I just want to make sure that you have an opportunity.
Well, Mr. Lopez, I think this, this is a generic question for you, Dr. Stubblefield. Um. It is my understanding that the board would have the, um. Authority as well as the opportunity to review. And perhaps expand or, um, look at at-risk services because they. They cost, number one, and that, um, the, the prior usage. May, may need to be adjusted. We haven't had that opportunity. And would you believe I'm correct or incorrect, or are those embedded someplace else? You want me to ask again? At-risk services, the thirty plus, I think right now is thirty-four million. We were budgeted forty-five million. But it says total budget twenty twenty-one, thirty-four point four two two million dollars. We haven't had that opportunity to discuss at-risk, the, the budget for at-risk services. Um, I'm under the opinion that the, that the board should. What's your opinion? I hope that didn't put you on the spot.
Honestly, I don't have enough information about, um, are you asking like, because it went up? To see where those dollars are allocated, it wasn't brought to the board?
What, what I'm saying is that. I asked for the board's purp- purpose to, what did we spend on at-risk services twenty twenty-one? So budgeting for twenty-one, twenty-two. Can't, you know, one would think maybe we would expand JAG K to all high schools or, or. Um, like you say, avid for all high schools. Well, we haven't had that conversation. And that since we are at the budget, in the budget process. Where in, I guess, in the budget are at-risk services? Have we addressed that? I guess that's a question for Mr. Covington, but also for you, Dr. Cov- Dr. Stubblefield. Um, those expenditures are key to our student success and. Since we're in the budget process. I'm concerned that we haven't had that conversation. Like, that's, that's the commentary.
I can say we have not expanded any of those programs, Dr. Nguyen, and we hadn't cut any of those programs that was listed in the twenty. Twenty twenty-one expenditures. So we plan to do the same basic programs.
And, um, as far as, and, um, if Ms. Walker is on here, she. Or someone may have some additional information. My understanding is that what Dennis said, we are. Or I don't know if any programs we're at, adding, we may, I don't know. So, um, Ms. Walker, if you want to explain what we're doing, I honestly don't have, uh, enough information. I know we're looking at Avid. Initially, that training and stuff out of S R dollars, and then we're gonna have to work backwards to build whatever. Sustainability into our, um, ju- our at-risk or general fund budgets. To make sure once we get all of the initial training, how do we, um, continue it? But we haven't had those discussions. I haven't been a part of those discussions.
And, and that's been my concern as well, for, and I've asked Mr. Lopez. And so this is not new to, to you, that here we are budgeting. Again, at-risk funds are in a separate fund, but also. The, one would think the board would want to consider how we're spending. Do we want to, to add? Because, uh, once again, and I've asked a thousand times. And the board is responsible for the answer. How do these funds translate into? Student achievement as well as the needs assessment for that matter, but that's, you know, that's a whole another story. And Ms. Walker took us through, Dr. Stubblefield, this entire, we're gonna do something. But, but at this point. The com- the, the board hasn't had a conversation on at-risk services.
And I'll, and then Ms. Walker, you can jump in, but I did this morning have a conversation with Dr. Toll, um, and. She's coming from the university setting. I gave her a hard copy of the Rose standards. And then we talked about KISA and the strategic plan and creating a, um, protocol decision-making process. That as we're making those decisions, when we're sharing the information with the board, we can tie it to all of the Rose standards. Um, KISA goals and the outcomes that we are, um, trying to achieve on the front end in our decision-making. So, um, Dr. Toll has that information and that is something, again, she started on July first. That she's aware of, so that we are having these conversations more proactively. And the board actually has the information, um, on an ongoing basis and as well as the, um, our community as well. Just how do we be transparent about that, the at-risk dollars, the out, and our, um, outcomes? With where the dollars are coming from and the data used to make those decisions.
Well, and thank you, but, and again, the point I'm making that the, the board. Needs to have that conversation we haven't had, and we're finished with this budgetary year. So, thank you, Mr. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And thank you, Dr. Stubblefield.
Thank you. Um, any other additional questions? Not, Dr. Stubblefield, um, Mr. Covington and staff, thank you for the information, board. Thank you for the conversation. Um, we've made some suggestions for staff to come back to us with some alternative proposals. Um, also keeping the current recommendations so that we can see some side-by-side comparisons as, as we make some decisions. So I know Mr. Covington, Dr. Stubblefield, and team will work on, on that and get that to the board so we can review. Um, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Covington, anything else before we close out today?
No, sir.
Oh, Mr. Lopez, when will we finish this up and when will we join again? Do we have a date? Are we gonna get one later on and get back to everybody? Cause I thought you have to submit this by August, right? And here we are in July, and I think we have two and a half weeks, give or take a little.
Well, I, I was hoping that we would get a vote on the twentieth to, to move forward with a regular board meeting, but.
So you're gonna have all this together by the twentieth?
So I, I think based on the recommendation, it sounds like it's some, some pretty, some math that, uh, Mr. Covington can put together. The different suggested proposals, you can email those out to the board by when do you think, Mr. Covington?
I get with Rachel, hopefully no later than Friday morning.
Okay, so that would give the board at least the weekend to review the different proposals. Um, and potentially we could vote on which way we want to go. At our Tuesday board meeting is what your, your hope is, Mr. Covington?
Yes.
Well, I have a question, cause we have a meeting with the teachers on the twenty-sixth, so. How's that gonna work out? Cause we haven't finalized their contracts.
Miss Page, I asked, I asked, um, Greg that same question, like, can we move a budget without finishing negotiations? And he was, he said, yes, we could, because we have a placeholder for, um, that negotiation.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Same question.
We're set for the twenty-sixth, you're saying the twentieth, so how do we do this? And, and.
I, I guess we're gonna have to stand fast, we, we only allocating four and a half million.
Well, that's a problem.
It, and the other component, I mean, and Greg is not here, and Dennis, you can tell me about the budget side. It is a placeholder and you're approving the budget, and my understanding is, as long as it's balanced, there may be redirects.
The budget is just an estimate going forward, it's always changeable.
Right, so once you, it just means that in the end, there may be. If, if you come in higher than that, that money's gonna have to come from somewhere, but in the end, it'll have to be. So let's say, for example, if, if we had had that, the, if we leave the bilingual line and. Where they come at and we just say, we're, we can't do that this year, it's gonna have to go in the salaries. That kind of thing is where we would have some flexibility.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, cause I, I didn't. I think it creates some other problems for us if we don't have the flexibility and not to be locked in.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Page.
Mr. Lopez, can Mr. Covington explain the, um, neutral form that Ms. Humphrey's requested?
Yes. Can you all see that now?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, based on the, the, the new law, what we were trying to show was. It, the, um, assessed valuation that the U G. Has given out as a preliminary number has gone up. And so in column C, this is our current, um, meal levies with the four point nine, six five one nine. Over here in column D. Based on how that new law was written, it's based on total dollars and not the meal levy. So to keep the same dollars, we would need to drop our meal levy. For general to nineteen point seven two, nineteen point seven two three. And capital, it has to go down to seven point six. So if you're proposing in our, in your budget is to all school districts, that your tax meal levy is above these neutral rates. You had to let the, uh, U G know. And so ours will be the twenty, the eight, the twelve point six three, and the nine. And so we would have to let the U G know that our tax levies are above the neutral levels. And every district in the state would have to do this because the twenty meals is already regulated by the state. That we have to have a twenty meal levy and this, and it is above the nineteen point seven, which is the neutral level.
Okay, so can you explain also E and F, please?
Okay, E is what's the budget that we are proposing are the meal levies that's in that, those budgets, in the current proposed budget. Remember, we made a change from, um, bond and interest. Which was ten point one eight, over here in column C, we proposed, it goes down to the nine. And the L O B went from eleven point four to twelve point six three, that's what generated that four million that we voted on back earlier. And then you take these numbers multiplied by this new value rate, and you get these new numbers that's in column E.
And so what is column B USD five hundred total compared to? Column E USD five hundred total, please?
That's the one point eight million that's now here, that where the cursor is. The new rate, the new, based on that, new assessed value work, valuation rate, it would generate one point eight million dollars. Of new tax, nu- new revenue for the school district.
Okay, and is it correct then, although you did not change the meal levy? Cause it still says four nine point six five one nine, four nine in column C and column. F, the fact that the assessed va- estimated assessed value increased. Therefore, the taxpayer will see an increase of one point eight million on their tax form? Tax revenue?
That's correct.
So while the meal levy did not change, the taxpayer will be paying. So while the meal levy did not change, the taxpayer will be paying in Kansas City, Kansas. This is not Wyandotte County, this is Kansas City, Kansas, one point eight million dollars more. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
All right, thank you all. Okay, um, if there are no other questions, then we will stand adjourned today. Thank you all for the information and, um, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Covington, thank you for all the work you've put into this. And staff, thank you. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, have a good day.
Yep.
Randy, we have matching shirts.
We do.
Different colors.
We do, have a good day, everybody.